Good afternoon, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're here today, actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to begin with public audience following the agenda. And we have a few people who've joined us in person. You know, just for future reference, anybody who is interested in joining our meetings to speak with us at the beginning, you can send an email to townmanager@simsbury-CT.gov. And I see we have Joan Coe with us, and what I'll ask Joan and other members of the public who've joined us to do your best to limit your comments to about five minutes. And of course, anyone who needs more time, I'm always able to meet with you individually. So Joan, let me turn it over to you to begin.
Thank you. Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Can you hear me?
We can, Joan.
Thank you. I would like to comment on the agenda item, "Discussion and Action Regarding Measures to Mitigate the Spread of COVID-19." The Board of Selectmen should discuss how they came to approve a concert of 10,000 attendees at the Darius Rucker Concert with Motorcyclists during a COVID-19 pandemic at Simsbury Meadows under the management of Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center on August 28, 2021. This event with no restrictions will become a super-spreader of COVID-19. The Farmington Valley Health District told me that Governor Lamont has usurped their powers to oversee the health of the community by allowing open concerts without restrictions to continue. Their hands are tied, but if they had the authority, they would cancel the concert. Why can't the Board of Selectmen cancel the concert as a super-spreader? Governor Lamont is asking the community to wear masks and get booster shots because the COVID variant is creating a health risk. Children are being mandated to wear masks at school without giving the parents the right to decide what is appropriate for their children, and concerts without restrictions are permissible? How can the Board of Selectmen mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and not cancel the concert, which will bring thousands of people from various towns with many underlying health issues, as a super-spreader of COVID-19 into the Simsbury community? The Board of Selectmen are responsible for the health and safety of the community. If you don't cancel the concert and the motorcyclists, you are failing your obligations to the community and should not be re-elected. I would like to comment on Agenda Item Recommended Appointment of Interim Town Clerk. Town Clerk Erica Butler has served the town for over five years with an excellent performance. Erica Butler has had a passion for her job, respected the people on her staff, and exemplified professionalism in her work. During the past several years, working under the direction of Town Manager Maria Capriola, Erica spent many hours during the COVID-19 pandemic, working tirelessly during the voting guidelines and other duties that were above and beyond her job description without any complaints. Erica has not received a raise in three years as her union contract is in arbitration. However, Town Manager Maria Capriola has received a yearly increase in salary and benefits given to her by the Board of Selectmen. Erica Butler has resigned, and others will follow as a result of Town Manager Maria Caprioli's mismanagement by treating her employees as indentured servants on call 24/7 without any recognition of their excellent performance. Town Manager Maria Capriola's interpersonal skills are lacking. She abuses her power and is void of any compassion. The Board of Selectmen should investigate the reasons why town employees find themselves under barrage of requests that undermine their professional abilities and place them in a toxic work environment. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Catch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. You know, I'll just share with this group and other people maybe who are joining us today may be wondering. We are in active conversation, a consultation with the Farmington Valley Health District regarding the Darius Rucker Concert. And like everything we've done through the pandemic, we'll be following the advice of public health officials to make an appropriate determination whether the concert can go on safely. To the next person who's joined us, I will turn the microphone over to Mark Lubetkin. Hi, Mark. Do we have Mark? I will go next to Michelle Page then.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, I got you, Mark.
Ah, I just got unmuted. I don't know how to do this stuff. I'm sorry.
Not at all. Go ahead.
Thank you, Eric and Board of Selectmen, for allowing me to visit with you today. I sure wish we could be doing this in person. I haven't seen you all, and honestly, I miss seeing you folks. So, Mark Lubetkin, 107 East Wheaton, Redstone Pub. I'm calling in because I want to talk about the town's approach to the pandemic and how we've done. For the last 18 months or so, the town has done an exceptional job, particularly through the Planning and Zoning Office and Sarah Nielsen and her efforts in the Farmington Valley Health District, and I appreciate it. However, now that we've gone through so much time, it is my opinion that we, as business owners, should be allowed to make our own decisions regarding how we manage ourselves, our businesses, and our customers. I do not want to see us going back to a mask mandate or any other COVID restrictions. Before COVID started here at the pub, the COVID restrictions started here at the pub. We put in all the measures that were eventually adopted well before the town and the Health District mandated it. And yet, we were still closed down like everyone else. Since the pandemic began, we, as a pub, have not had a single incident of COVID here. Thank God. We have all of our staff vaccinated. We made the decision last week as a team, my staff, myself, my investors, et cetera, to require everyone that comes here to be fully vaccinated. We do not want to reinstitute masks. And it is my opinion that the businesses should be allowed to make their own decisions on how we deal with this. It has been a very challenging, very difficult, very stressful time and financially devastating to most of us. Yes, I kept all my staff on during the entire pandemic and paid them fully. I didn't pay myself. We're hurting, and a lot of the things that happened because of pandemic is making it difficult. Please don't make it more difficult for us to stay in business and be a contributing member of the community by changing what we've successfully done here as a business. Please, please, please do not require mask mandates again or the separation measures. Let us do what we need to do to be safe. That's all I needed to say. And just a thank you to Tom Roy and his team for his amazing response this week with the little floods we've had, big floods we've had, and his continuing excellence in managing the Department of Public Works.
Mark, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, I see we've got Michelle Page. Hi, Michelle. Hey, Michelle, I think you're muted, so.
There we go. Hello. Hi. I was just concerned about the, um, I don't know anything about the town clerk position, but the mitigation of the COVID. And I am on the other side of the original lady that spoke, Joan Coe. I think it's about time the government got out of our business and let us be personally responsible for our own health. I understand that there are some people that are afraid, but statistically, COVID has less of a chance of killing people than the flu. And I'm really tired of everybody trying to mitigate something that is not anybody's fault. Just, we need to get out there and get on with our business and have concerts every weekend. It doesn't really matter to me. In the last 12 months, we have lost supposedly 3,852 people. And that statistically is about the same amount of people that we lose every year to chronic lower respiratory disease and accidents. And I don't see anybody proposing that we stop driving or having accidents. So I think it's kind of ridiculous that we're going around doing masks and asking for papers to show our vaccination status. It's just absolutely ridiculous to me.
Thank you, Michelle. Tom, did we have anybody else joining for public audience today? I don't see anybody. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in public audience before we move on?
Hey, Tom, you are on mute. I think he was trying to respond, Eric. Sorry, you're on mute, Tom. There you go.
Sorry. Shannon McQueen had signed up, but I don't see her in the meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. In that case, we can move on to our agenda items. First, Discussion and Action Regarding Measures to Mitigate the Spread of COVID-19. So, you know, we're here because, as we know, case numbers continue to rise heading into the late summer. And in consultation with Maria and Sean, I wanted to call the special meeting to discuss measures and actions to mitigate the spread of the virus. Many towns in Connecticut, we know, are taking the step once again of requiring people wear masks in indoor places. CROG is writing a letter to the governor urging him to enact a statewide mask mandate. We've been in close consultation with the Farmington Valley Health District, which has guided us so ably through this unprecedented time. And I want to start by turning it over to Maria, our town manager, to share some data with us and the steps that she's taken to keep our community safe.
Great. Eric, thank you so much for that introduction, and thank you all for joining us today. Particularly, you know, on short notice, I know we just posted the meeting agenda yesterday. But again, just want to thank everybody for their time and their understanding, and really wanted to lead off with sharing some recent data that we've received. Our COVID situation within the community is very quickly evolving. I know just, you know, earlier in the summer, things were trending and progressing in a very positive way. We were seeing no new cases or maybe one new case in a week. But again, in a very few short weeks, our situation has rapidly evolved. And I did want to share that with our most recent week of data, ending August 14, we had 28 new cases within the community. And the week prior, we had 19 new cases. So over our two-week period, we had 47 new cases of COVID within the community. You know, those are numbers that we were seeing last fall or in the spring. Certainly not numbers that we had been seeing more recently. The Health District shared some additional information with me that I think is really powerful in terms of putting this into perspective. At this time last year, they had 10 cases in all of their 10 Health District towns. This week, this year, they're at 120 cases and counting amongst their 10 Health District towns. What they are seeing is a number of breakthrough cases amongst vaccinated people. Again, when they look at their Health District as a whole, about half of their cases are amongst vaccinated individuals. In a short period of time, we are rapidly approaching the red alert COVID status. That's the municipal COVID alert system that the state had developed last year. You may recall that is the highest level of risk. In order to be at the red alert status, you need 15 cases, positive cases, per 100,000 residents. And with the data that was released on Thursday, we're at 13.2. So again, our situation is rapidly evolving, and we are approaching that statistic. You may also recall that Hartford County and the state of Connecticut have both reached the highest level of risk that is currently available on the CDC guidance. So this afternoon, looking at all of this data, consulting with the Health District, consulting with regional towns, through our Council of Governments, et cetera, I've made a very difficult decision, but I've come to the conclusion that in order to protect the health and safety of our community, that I will be issuing a municipal executive order later today requiring that all folks in town over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status, went indoor public settings, wear face coverings until further notice. This municipal order will go into effect at 12:01 a.m. on Monday, August 23. We do have some exceptions to this, such as if we have a person with a medical condition, behavioral condition, or disability, in which wearing a mask would be contrary to their health and safety. As I mentioned previously, anyone under the age of two years will not be required to wear a mask in an indoor public setting. If you have a person who is eating or drinking, for example, indoors at a restaurant, or if we have a person who's in an indoor space when they're alone or otherwise separated by others with a partition or at least six feet of distancing. So an example of this might be, for example, an office setting where an individual has a private office. This order will not apply to residential dwellings. I think that's very important to note. And I do want the board and the community to know that this is certainly not a decision that I took lightly. It was a very difficult decision. I think throughout the pandemic that we, as a town, have taken very careful steps to balance the needs of our workforce, of our patrons, of our residents. In doing so, we have been able to keep our essential services and critical infrastructure fully operational. That's something I'm very proud of. I think that this mask mandate is going to help us to ensure that that continues. And I'd really like to encourage our community to think about the sense of community that we have here. I think it's one of the things that I love most about living here. I think a lot of folks know I grew up in Vermont, and there's a real strong sense of community there, and I think there is here too. I love living in a community that people care so much about their neighbors and the people who live in town. And so I know this is going to be difficult for many, but to really not think about how this might affect you personally, but to think about that community, to think about the we. You know, to perhaps think about your elderly neighbor who might be vaccinated but can still contract COVID, or maybe that family down the street who has children who aren't yet eligible for the vaccination, right? This is part of that larger community good and trying to help keep everyone in our community as safe and healthy to the extent possible. As you know, many towns in Connecticut are starting to move in this direction in lieu of a state mandate. Our neighbor Bloomfield issued such an order yesterday, and a number of towns are planning to do so today. The Capital Region Council of Governments, of which we are a part of, did issue a letter to the governor yesterday urging him to please reinstitute the statewide mandate. Our counterpart, the Southeastern Cog, which comprises about 22 towns, issued a similar letter to him Wednesday. So just those two cogs alone represent over a third of the towns and cities in Connecticut. And again, they have called upon the governor, you know, asking him to please reconsider, again, just instituting that statewide mask mandate for a period of time. Again, just want to highlight a few of the points that the Health District is trying to remind people of and to educate people of. But again, that this particular Delta strain of the virus is spreading twice as easily as previous strains. It's now representing more than 80% of the cases in the Northeast. As I mentioned earlier, we are seeing vaccine breakthrough cases. About half of the cases in the Health District are now vaccine breakthrough cases. And they're really encouraging folks, if you are not feeling well, to please go and get tested. There's a lot of folks who, in fact, turn out to be positive for COVID at the moment. I'll start off by thinking that they're experiencing seasonal allergies or a cold. So if you are experiencing any symptoms at all, please, we encourage you to go seek a test. I do also want to share that our incredibly generous group of volunteers that earlier on in the pandemic had been selling face coverings for our community are back at it. They had previously donated over 5,700 face coverings, which is just remarkable. It's a really lovely group of volunteers at the Senior Center. As we were starting to see the virus progress again, we reached back out to them and asked them to replenish our supplies, which had become quite low. So they are, again, making face covering. If you are a Simsbury resident, a Simsbury business, if you are an employee who works in our town, please don't hesitate, reach out to our Senior Center. There's a phone number in my report, and we're going to make that available on the website. And you can obtain as many free face coverings as you would like. So again, many thanks to our volunteers. We've also, in an effort to help the business community, have drafted sample posters that are going to be easily downloadable in eight-and-a-half-by-eleven or eleven-by-seventeen size. So again, signage that you can place up at your business, letting folks know that face coverings are required upon entry. So again, we will be widely circulating that as well. And a copy of the municipal executive order, along with a printable poster and our forthcoming press release, will be available later today through our website. We'll also be sending that out through our news and announcements email subscription service and circulating this through our social media accounts. So, but definitely encourage folks who would like to see more information to please check our website later today. And I'm open to any questions that folks might have.
Thanks, Michelle. Before opening up for questions from the board, I wanted to just turn the floor over to Sean Ascom, who is Chair of our Public Safety Subcommittee. Hey, Sean.
Hey, thanks, Eric. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Maria, thank you for all that information, and again, thank you for issuing this executive order. And for those that might not understand the process, the issuing of an executive order rests solely with the chief executive of the community, right, Maria? And that, in this case, would be yourself. Our purposes today are to discuss as a board, ask any questions, and then hopefully affirm support for that executive order. Because as Eric, Maria, and I spoke about this, it was important that the six of us as representatives of the community from the elected side are in lockstep with the chief executive. So it's important that we have our discussion and then hopefully can support Maria's executive order. I certainly sympathize and appreciate where Mark and other business owners are coming from. And I can tell you, as many of you have heard, I'm certainly a proponent for small government. But my understanding and comprehension of this is simply a speed limit analogy in that government does have a role in making sure that we are reinforcing good behaviors where it's appropriate. And I'm hopeful that if we get down the mask road, as Maria has issued from an executive order standpoint, we don't have to resort back to the draconian closings of businesses, limiting of capacity, and the other measures that I think really do, as Mark exemplified, really take away from our business's ability to be successful. We're trying to get ahead of it as best we can, based on what we've learned over the last year, and as Eric already said, in consultation with our health partners. So I think this is an important measure so that we don't have to swing the pendulum too far, and we can get through this Delta variant spike quickly and safely and hopefully return to whatever the more normal is as we continue to grapple with COVID. But Eric, I appreciate the opportunity to just learn those comments there. Thank you.
Sure, Sean. Let me open it up to other questions and comments from the board.
I just noticed that West Hartford put out their
Wendy, go ahead.
mandate in the last few hours.
Okay.
Yeah. West Hartford just put theirs out in the last few hours. So it's going to be, you know, for, I understand the business situation, and I was very happy to stop wearing my mask for a while. Now I've got them back out. And I noticed that a lot of people at the grocery store and everything have taken it upon themselves to just continue to wear masks as things progress. But to have our neighbors also in this just helps us. It's going to be the same pretty much everywhere locally. So I think it's a good move right now, and it's not coming from the state, so it should come from us.
Thanks, Wendy. Mike?
Yeah, Mark makes a very good point, and I don't completely disagree. I agree with his point, but I think, as Sean pointed out, our job is to look at the greater community and to address that. I am pleased and am a proponent of whatever action we take is not just Simsbury, but also our adjoining communities to the extent we can. I would personally hate to have one set of rules in one town and the budding town have different set of rules. I think by doing it through CROG or some other group or even the Health District, I think we get that consistency. And I am more than hopeful that this is a short blip that we can get around. And by doing it locally, we can be way more adept at removing this executive order or modifying it. And my hope is that we can get through this, and I believe we will. We've all been stressed, and no one's happy about having to go back to wearing masks. I haven't seen anybody doing the happy dance yet when they went for them. So I am going to support this.
Thanks, Mike. Chris, was there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, just for the, for the good of the town, absent absent a state mandate, the executive order from the governor, I would encourage Eric, you and Maria to put out clear communications, or as best as you can, to the town that what would be the the point that we would get to retract this from a case count load or a grading or whatever it's called. Because I myself don't want to sit here in putting forward this and supporting an effort that is seemingly without any sort of justifiable or objective end, which is a concern for many people around their civil liberties, including myself. So I would try to be as clear as we can as soon as we can with what would be the measurements absent the state, excuse me, the governor making a mandate, which then would take it out of our control. What is our going to be, our release for this? What is the measurement going to be? So people have a clear objective and a goal and an understanding in line, which I think is helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. Maria, I'm just wondering, is that something you're able to respond to at this time?
No, but that is, I think, a very, very good point, Chris, almost a sort of a finish line or a goal for us as a community to work towards. I think that would be very helpful. So I will consult with the Health District on that and report back to the group for sure. Thank you. That's very good feedback.
Yeah. You know, from my perspective, I really appreciate Mark coming on this call and sharing his perspective as the owner of Redstone. I, you know, I can't imagine what it's been like over the past year and a half as a Main Street business, and I'll never fully understand that. Part of why I'm supportive of requiring masks this time is so that we never have to go back to what we had to do in the spring of 2020, where businesses had to completely shut down, where our schools had to completely shut down. Just really devastating for our children and parents. And if this is something proactive that we can do, and public health officials believe will help to stem the spread, it's something I'm supportive of. You know, I also wanted to, you know, comment on how, on the one hand, the spiriting it is that we are in a position to do this, but at the same time, I feel like it's a very different situation than we were in this time last year, because we have several vaccines that are just a miracle of science. And as Maria pointed out, there have been some breakthrough cases. It's disconcerting to see that happening, but it's important to emphasize that the vaccines are still incredibly effective at preventing severe COVID. So with that, I wanted to see, I know we have a number of staff on the phone from different departments. I wanted to see if there was anything else anyone wanted to add. Okay. Let me introduce a motion. Is there a motion effective August 20, 2021, "To Support and Endorse the Issuance of Municipal Executive Order by Town Manager Maria Capriola, Requiring the Use of Face Coverings by All Individuals When Indoors in Public Settings Regardless of Vaccination Status"? The executive order will take effect at 12:01 a.m. Monday, August 23, 2021.
Eric, I make that motion. This is Sean.
I'll second that. This is Wendy.
Is there any further conversation? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Maria, is there any other business before we adjourn?
Yes, we do just have one other.
Oh, there's another agenda item. Look at that.
There is. There is.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if I could, our terrific town clerk, Erica Butler, has very regrettably announced her resignation. She's going to be pursuing an opportunity in the private sector in a completely different field. So we really want to wish her well and all the best, sort of in this next journey of her life and this next chapter of her career. But what will happen is we will need to appoint an interim town clerk while the recruitment for her replacement is underway. You may recall, it has been a little while now, but our charter is silent, the appointment of interim department heads. And we did have some department head retirements crash back in early 2018. And at the time, Bob, our town attorney, had provided some advice that perhaps, you know, it would be best for the Board of Selectmen to follow the same And at the time, Bob, our town attorney, had provided some advice that perhaps, you know, it would be best for the Board of Selectmen to follow the same appointment process for interim appointments as we do for our, our permanent appointments for the department head. And so we are very grateful. Our longtime former town clerk Carolyn Kylie has offered to come back a few days a week and help us out during the transition. So many, many thanks to Carolyn. She more than admirably, you know, served us for, oh my goodness, I think it was well over 20 years as town clerk, but she started her service with the town in 1984 as an assistant town clerk and worked with us in that office through 2016. So just a really special individual, very grateful to her to helping us out during the transition. So my recommendation would be that we appoint her as interim town clerk following Erica's resignation from service until a permanent replacement is found.
I wanted to echo the kind words said at this meeting about Erica Butler. She will be very much missed. And we're very fortunate that Carolyn is able to come and step up into her former position to be able to maintain continuity. Are there any questions from the board on this appointment?
Eric, this is Sean. Just a point. I did actually reach out to Erica Butler myself. And she shared with me that, and she was recruited from the private sector and it sounds like it's a pretty, pretty good opportunity for her. So she was sad to leave us and I did ask if we could, we could talk her into staying. Because we do, as you and Maria both said, appreciate very much what she's done for our community over the last number of years. I think she's really done a graceful job of staying in a nonpartisan spot and really leading our, that department forward. It's not an easy group to run. It's not an easy set of rules and laws and regulations to manage. So, but she pledged that she would keep us, keep us in mind if things ever changed. And again, we, I wished her well on behalf of the board, so just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, she, no doubt she supported our town through some unprecedented elections, among other things, these past several years. Other questions or thoughts from the board?
I have a couple of questions. One is, you know, what sort of, will there be any degradation of service? You know, given that we don't have a full-time town manager, you know, if people in town, you know, should just expect that with a two-day-a-week person. And then the other question, I don't need them answered here, but is how long can we go without a full-time town clerk? So just a couple of things I was thinking.
So, you know, we hate to see folks, see folks go, but it often happens if they take, you know, perhaps employment in other municipalities, private sector employment, they retire. Sometimes we have lots of notice, sometimes we have very short notice. So working through staffing transitions is sort of part of our normal routine operation. And I don't think that our residents should expect to see any sort of major disruption to service. And we do have some additional temporary help coming just to the office in addition to our former town clerk coming to help out as well. So we'll have again a couple of people providing additional hours to make sure that the office is appropriately staffed.
Thanks, Maria.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion effective August 28th, 2021 to appoint Carolyn Kylie? To, Maria, I apologize. I'm just going to make sure. Do you want it to be August 20th or August 28th?
Uh, August 28th. Erica will be with us.
That's when she will begin. Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there a motion effective August 28th, 2021 to appoint Carolyn Kylie to the position of interim town clerk until the date upon a new permanent town clerk officially begins working Simsberry?
I'll move that, Eric.
I heard Sean second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody joining our special meeting today. I wish everybody well. Is there a motion?
Thank you, everybody. I'll move that.
I'll second it, Mike.
Heard Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll see everybody soon.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care, folks.